Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,224th Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience, for petitions on tonight's agenda involving a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
This is De Naro.
Here.
Mr. Bonjero?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Drows?
Here.
Mr. Enture, absent, Curie Magno is here. Chairman Wolschow?
Is here. Also with us tonight, we have Mr. Jacob Uhazi, and we also have Stephanie Reese, both from our Planning Department. They will be giving us background information on the petitions that are on our agenda tonight. There's only one on the agenda. And for the folks in our audience, the format is that we will have our background information presented to us by our planning staff, will then ask the petitioner to come forward and speak to their petition. We'll have some questions for them, and then anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against the petition will also have an opportunity to come forward after that. Then we'll make our decision. With that, we're going to start with the Public Hearing section of our agenda, item number one.
Petition 2024-12-02-20 submitted by Nene's Little Angels Daycare, requesting waiver use approval to pursue it to Section 6.13 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance to operate a daycare nursery at 28275 Five Mile Road located on the southwest corner of Five Mile Road and Lyons Street in the northeast quarter of Section 24.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Uhazi?
Good evening. So this is the petition involves operating daycare childcare nursery on the corner of Five and Lyons Road, or Lyons Street. And we did receive some updated site plans this afternoon that have been provided to you, but I will discuss those through this presentation. The site is zoned C1 local business in the front 180 feet, and the remaining 30 feet of the property is zoned P parking. Regulations pertaining to childcare nurseries require a waiver use approval under Section 6.13 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance. The petition building shares an interior wall with the adjacent parcel to the west, which is also split zone between C1 and part P. To the north, across Five Mile Road, all the properties are zoned C1. To the east, across Lyons Street, are two vacant parcels split zoned between C1 and RUF. And to the south and southeast are single-family homes of the Dutch Mills Garden subdivision, which are all zoned RUF. The property is measures 21,131 square feet in area with approximately 93 feet along Five Mile Road and 210 feet along Lyons Street. The site contains an existing one-story building measuring 15 feet in height and measures 3,606 square feet in size. The building was previously occupied by Livonia Urgent Care and Medical Center, but it currently sits vacant. The petitioner would occupy the entire building, which consists of a ground-level floor and basement level. This is the latest site plan that we have received. The ordinance requires childcare centers to have at least 5,000 square feet of outdoor place space. The site plan shows 2,900 square feet of fenced outdoor play area located directly south of the building. The Planning Commission and City Council can waive the 5,000 square feet requirement with approval from the state regulatory body. The outdoor play area would be surrounded by five-foot white vinyl fencing. Access to the play area is provided by two gates to the north. The site plan identifies an emergency-only exit gate in the southeast corner of the play area. Access and parking to the site, daycare nurseries require one parking space per 250 square feet. These regulations would require 12 parking spaces for this petition. The site plan shows 24 parking spaces for the daycare and another six unspecified parking spaces located in the dogleg that extends to the west. Two access drives serve the site on Lyons Street, and cross-access to the western neighbor property appears to be maintained. The dumpster has been moved to the southeast corner of the play area. The site plan now shows a six-inch CMU dumpster enclosure as well, with no further details on the make. Landscaping would have no changes to the existing landscaping. The location expects to be licensed for about 90 children and have staff of about 15 members. Ages would range from six weeks to five years old. The plan includes a vestibule lobby reception area, four classrooms, a kitchenette, and restrooms. One of the classrooms would be located in the basement level. The elevation plans that were submitted show that the previously covered windows on the north and east side of the building would be daylighted. To the north, there would add two new doors and one new window. On the east, there would be one new door and two new windows. The plans also show a proposed wall sign on the east elevation above the main entryway, but no size is listed. The existing monument sign on the northeast corner would also remain in place. With that, I also have correspondence.
Yes, if you'd like to read that out to us.
In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no obligation or objections to the proposed waiver use at this time, but would like to note the following items. The subject parcel is assigned the address 28275 Five Mile Road. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner will need to contact this department once approvals have been obtained. Two, the existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Sanitary Sewer and Water Main and Private Stormwater. The submitted drawings do not include any proposed utility information or calculations. We cannot comment on any proposed impacts to the existing system at this time. Although the drawings do not indicate any future utility information, it should be noted that any proposed development other than building renovations will be required to provide storm water improvements and detention per Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. Any disturbances with the Five Mile Road right-of-way will require permits through the Wayne County Department of Public Service, including drive approach and sidewalk removal and placement. This is signed David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. From the Fire Marshal's Office, the office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with a request to renovate a commercial building on the property located in the above referenced address. We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulation. Smoke detectors in every room plan review on amount and location of carbon monoxide detectors. Due to building not being suppressed with sprinklers with a below-grade level, curious as to ratio of children to staff, and a written plan for evacuation procedures. A further detailed plan review will take place when the division receives an official plan set. Signed Brian Kukla, Fire Marshal. From the Livonia Police Department, I've reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I have no objections to the proposal. Feel free to contact me. Signed Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. From the Inspection Department, pursuant to your requests, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. One, the petition is a change of use and requires the building to meet all current Michigan Building Codes, including the Michigan Barrier Free Code. This will be addressed further at the time of our plan review if this project moves forward. Two, the parking lot shall be repaired and re-stripped as necessary. Parking spaces shall be double striped within 10 feet wide by 20 feet deep. And three, signage has not been reviewed. This department has no further objections to the petition. Signed Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. From the Finance Department, I've reviewed the address connected with the above noted petition. As there are no outstanding amounts receivable, general water or sewer, I have no objections to the proposal. This is signed Connie Kupla, Chief Accountant. From the Treasury Office, as of today, the summer 2024 taxes of $8,006.2 have not been paid on this property, and the winter taxes of $6,847.98 are due February 14, 2025. Attached are copies of the tax bills. Signed Susan Nash, City Treasurer. And I have a letter on behalf of the petitioner, from their real estate partner. We shall pay any outstanding property taxes on the property commonly known as 28275 Five Mile Road, Livonia, Michigan at closing. The title company has already collected all of the property tax information required, and we'd be sending out the payment on our behalf from the sale proceeds provided by the purchaser, Nene's Little Angels Holding LLC. Signed Iraham Ababars, dated January 12, 2025. And finally, we have a letter from the public to the Livonia Zoning Board Commission. I'd like to first and foremost apologize for not being able to physically attend the meeting tonight. Based upon members of the board's recommendations, I have attempted to meet with the new potential owner of 28275 Five Mile Road, but haven't been able to physically meet with the new owner due to scheduling conflicts on both parties. My name is Gina McHugh Myers. I own the attached adjoining property of 28289 Five Mile Road and 28291 Five Mile Road, where I run a retirement planning business. I purchased these properties in 2013. My building is attached to 28275 Five Mile Road. We share a roof, a brick wall, and a parking lot that are directly attached. McHugh Financial has been helping the citizens of Livonia and the surrounding area plan and secure successful retirement for over 11 years at this location. I have invested well over $100,000 in these properties, constantly upgrading both the outside facade and the interior within. I believe these improvements have increased not only my property values, but the surrounding values as well. I've grown to adore Livonia and would love nothing more than to have my business there for years to come. Over the last decade, I have witnessed the citizens, officers, and board members help transform and improve the city. I encourage people to bring their businesses to Livonia, and I am delighted to welcome a daycare facility to the area. I do unfortunately have a large number of concerns in connection with the office/medical meeting. Although I love more than anything the sounds of children playing, it's been my experience over the last 26 years that a quiet, calm, dependable environment is 100% necessary for a financial service business. This environment has proven to be necessary when discussing a recent loss of the family, deciding on major financial decisions, planning for retirement, and discussing someone's estate plan. I even make it a point to not have my cellphone in the meeting. Naturally, I'm concerned at the noise levels that will penetrate the adjoining walls, and even more so the playscape noise levels outside of my office with doors. The potential new owner has assured me over the phone that a high-quality sound barrier is being installed on the 28275 interior walls to help prevent the inside noise levels. I'm very appreciative of that accommodation, but I am much more concerned about the outside playscape noise level. I suggested the playscape potentially be moved to the back of the parking lot against the parking lot wall, but even the prospective owner expressed noise level concerns for the resident living behind, even though they would have a six-foot-high thick brick wall and backyard separating them. My other major concern is the traffic parking situation. I have been assured that a privacy fence would be installed prior to the opening of the business to help prevent cars parking in my lot during pickup drop-off of the children. With an estimated 70 to 80 children per day, there's a lot of traffic to endure off Five Mile, which is my private drive/parking lot, and is the only entrance off the main road. I believe a privacy fence is the only way to assure both the safety for children from the vehicles that continuously drive through the lot, but also to keep my lot clear for my own clients, especially during the heavy pickup/dropoff times. I have requested clear signage to be installed showing the entrance and exit of the daycare, so I don't have to be concerned for the safety of my senior clients walking from the handicap spots to my front door on the other side of my private drive. The survey of 28275 appears to zigzag a little behind my property, but the plans show a straightforward, straight privacy fence through my lot. This is confusing to me, unless the property line needs to be addressed. At first, I didn't believe there was a solution for the outdoor noise, but recently a friend told me about high-quality sound barrier panels that can be customized to entirely enclose the outdoor playscape structure. I have not looked into the cost factor, but this seems like a plausible solution for the outdoor noise concern. Ultimately, my property in 28275 was zoned as a medical office building. I want to maintain the quality and value of my properties and not have anything that could take away from their value. In my brief phone conversation, the prospective property owners of 28275 seem to be accommodating, understanding, and successful business owners. Being a female minority business owner myself, I'm excited to see more business owners entering Livonia, and I look forward to working with them with the hopes we can come to a solution. Sincerely, Gina McHugh Myers. And with that, that's all the correspondence that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Uhazi. Is there any questions for our planning staff? Just De Naro?
Yeah. Jacob, has the tax bill been paid? I know we've got correspondence on it, but has there been any movement since?
No. It's my understanding that basically it's in some sort of escrow until the property closes, and at that time, those funds will be transferred.
Do we know when that'll happen, when the property closes? Is it going to be after this process?
It's probably conditional on this, I would imagine.
Got it.
Chair?
Sure. You're all set, Mr. De Naro?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bonjero?
A couple things. Do we know of any other daycares in the city that are joined to another business?
I've discussed with my Director Mark, and I've looked at it. We are not aware of any. That's not to say there is not any, but we are not aware of any.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because I know I spoke to the owners next door at length last week, and the noise is the biggest concern. And then I'm looking at like the aerial view of the lot configuration, and on ours right here, we've got, the view shows a bright red outline of the lot configuration for each building. So what happens to the dogleg here?
Can I get that up over here? Does anybody get that picture up?
Yeah, it's right there. It's that. So where the dogleg is that goes to the west, the fence line that they're showing putting up comes square off the building, so are they giving away that? I mean, what happens to that extra piece of property there?
It appears, per their site plan, it appears that it's just, it would still be their property, but it's remained striped as if it was for the other property. The petitioner may be able to speak to more of why that is, but that's the way this site plan is laid out.
But I think, I'm hoping that these owners understand that that's the property configuration, because she mentions that the property outline is concerning to her. The other thing is, is the dumpster where we talked about, it doesn't seem to be placed in the area like we talked at the study meeting?
At the study meeting, yes, it was discussed being placed further south towards, replacing some of the parking. As mentioned, the site does have adequate parking, so losing some of those parking in the southwest corner would not be an issue.
It seems awkward right there, right next to the playground. And we can take that up with the petitioner, too. I think that's it for right now until the petitioner comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for planning staff? Okay. If the petitioner's here, feel free to come forward to our podium. Thank you for being here. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Well, I'd ask that you start with your name and address for our record.
My name is Shanita Farmer. My address is 17150 Inxter Road, Redford, Michigan, 48240.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Farmer, for being here. And what would you like to tell us about your business?
We have been in the Redford area for the last, since 2017. We have three locations there. We currently have serviced over hundreds of children. We are a professional daycare center. Our teachers are qualified with teaching certificates and/or bachelor's degrees and above. We offer a variety of different services to children, where working families can go to work every day and know that their children are being cared for and educated. I am passionate about this. I never, we went to school, so it wasn't like, hey, I want to open a daycare. I went to school, I got degrees so that I can teach children. I am a mother of three, a single mother of three. I have a son who has autism, which prompted me to get further into the educational realm, because I know how difficult it is to take care of children, and I also know how it is being a parent and having to work to provide for your children. We call our centers a home away from home. We are family-oriented. We love what we do. We love what we provide. We would say that we are upstanding citizens of Redford. We, again, we have three locations there. The city township county knows us. We are respectable. We live, our current, all of our current centers are either one that is on, is attached to other locations, and the current one on Six Mile and Inxter is next to a home, and we share a retaining wall. And the respect is there. To speak on that, I did address the outside noise. Unfortunately, you know, kids will be kids. We don't allow children to, you know, when they're outside, they're just playing. We want to work with the community to see how, what works best for them. We propose right now they go outside for like 30-minute increments between 10 and 11, they're in by 11:30, 10 to 11:30, something like that. And then the next set goes out around 3:00 to maybe 4:00 or 5:30. So they will be, you know, they're being dismissed at 5:30 when pretty much everybody would get home. I also am interested in maybe having, we do indoor play for inclement weather. I did speak with Ms. Gina in great length, and thank you, and we made the adjustments to make sure that her building and her business is respected as ours. And we're just hoping to come into the community to add more value to Livonia and work with the residents.
Okay. Well, thank you for that presentation. Let me see if there's some questions for you. I think there's probably a few from some of the commissioners. Questions for our petitioner? Mr. Bonjero?
Hello.
Hello.
Couple of questions. One, when the kids come out to the play area, where do they come out of the basement?
Well, they will come in different sections. So as you can see, we have eight different age groups. Certain age groups are not allowed to be mixed on a playground at one time. So the four-year-olds or the three-year-olds that are in the basement, they will come out of the basement, or, because it'll be easier, out the basement and onto the playground.
Okay. It looks like it's completely fenced in. There's a couple of gates to get in each side. There's a, looks like an electrical transformer out there. It's a cabinet. I didn't open it up, but I'm just wondering if you guys should try to block that off so the kids can't mess around with that? It didn't look like it was locked. If you look on the backside next, on the back of the building, there's a transformer on the ground. Then there's a gas meter, too. I would think it'd be a good idea to try to block that off. With some type of a gate, though, because they're going to probably have to access that utility company in the future, you know what I mean? But I would like you to consider that. The big thing is the sound. So I don't know how we ensure that that's going to be taken care of, because they made it very clear to me that they can hear literally everything on the other side of the wall when the other business was there. And so their concern was with kids inside, it's going to be a lot louder, and she needs quiet, and that's how she runs her business. So I don't know how we, it would've been nice to have you guys get together and come to an agreement, or have a blueprint with the architect stating what type of sound barriers are going to be put up, so it's agreeable to everybody. You know what I'm saying? I don't know how to address that, but I think that should be, that should be, that needs to be addressed. I think that's very important, because they wanted to be here, but somebody's sick in the family.
Right. I spoke with her. I spoke with her, and I actually, in our car ride when we got on the phone, I had just left the building. And when she told me of her concerns, I immediately turned back around, and I said, hey, I'm about to walk through the building. Would you like to be on FaceTime? And I, improv, walked through the entire building, every classroom. She didn't hear a peep, and it was peak hours.
Was it? Okay.
It was peak hours.
She said you guys are very workable, but it was still conveyed, very concerned about it.
All kids aren't the same.
Right.
All centers aren't the same. Kids, when you have structure with children, you don't get all of that. We have structure. We have a daily, our routine is, we follow the routine to the T every minute of the day. Do kids get antsy? Do we have some children falling out and everything? Yes, but it's not all of them. You maybe get one or two. They don't scream and yell for hours. There's a calming corner. We know how to calm them. We are trained. We know how to talk to them. They know how to talk to us. We teach them that. Our kids know how to speak hand-sign language, so, because I can't understand you when you're crying. So they know how to tell us more happy, things like that. So we equip them with the tools, because of course, in our industry, we don't want to hear the hollering children with babies all day.
Yeah, right.
That's not, that's not what we're here to do. We're here to teach them.
Yeah. You can see their concern.
Absolutely.
They see 90 kids, you know, the first thing you go, oh my gosh, it's going to be loud. You know what I mean?
And the limit is 90, but we won't have 90. I have buildings that are licensed for 97 kids, and I have a number of like 50 or 60, so it won't be, I won't say that it won't be 90, but that won't be the norm all the time.
Okay. I just think it's a concern that really needs to be addressed, the sound in and out, I think, just of all this. It's a great petition, and I like it. I just think for them, because they couldn't be here and they couldn't talk to you, they almost could've been at the study meeting, would've been good. We could've hashed this out, but I think at a minimum, we put some language in here that the sound will be addressed in and out. You know what I mean?
My architect here, Mr. Cook, is here to contest that on his.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. My name is Brian Cook of Develop Architecture. I'm the architect for the project. And when Ms. Farmer spoke about the concern about the noise on the interior, my current understanding, because I haven't been inside the roof or nothing, but it's two CMU walls, right, that are shared. So, and per the plans right now, only about half of her building would have a classroom up against it. So our anticipation, as you see, yeah, at the top, yeah, that classroom there on the left-hand side. So anticipation would add sound attenuation to that, that shared wall for most, for the space itself, right? Because now it's a long, you know, long, narrow space, so we want to add stuff like that. There'll be stuff on the wall anyway, but making sure we're doing that. And on top of that, depending on how the, if they are connected, I don't think their two roofs are connected, but if they are, figure out adding some insulation above the ceiling to make sure we're stopping that sound from traveling. The outside, I think there's a lot of different, you know, strategies to attack that. But we're open to having that conversation.
Yeah, and it might be something you get set up, you start opening up, and then you guys, if she's complaining, you guys work it out.
Absolutely. We have, I have her number. I actually reached out to her yesterday, I'm sorry, yesterday to, you know, like, hey, are we still meeting for tomorrow? And I didn't get a response, and then I called her as well to follow up, and I didn't get a response. She did email text me back this morning and told me of the emergencies, and she, I asked, can we meet tomorrow? I am leaving to go out of town, but I told her I can meet with her about 15, 20 minutes tomorrow in the morning. So I am definitely open for.
She said it works. I just want to make sure it's addressed.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that.
Thank you for asking.
I think that's, I think that's most of my questions, the dumpster and that, and that was it. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. David.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Drows?
I have a couple. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. Thanks for coming. I agree, I think it's a good, good project. It seems like it's a good location for it, off a main road, you know, certainly for pickups and drop-offs. So there was a couple of things we talked about at our study session, and maybe I'll go through them and you could speak to them. I did see that it looks like you are proposing some improvements to the ADA accessible route, which is one of the things we talked about, so we're happy to see that. The one item that I don't think was necessarily indicated on the plans, other than saying that the plan is to maintain existing, is the lighting we talked about. So currently out there right now, it seems like there are kind of floodlights that shine off the building, and just kind of reviewing our city's policy, I think the goal is to try to not have that, so it's casting glare onto adjacent properties. Maybe you speak to that. Is there any opportunity that you see as part of the project to correct that?
I think-
I think it might just be, you, uh, for the, for the lights that are currently on the building, picking, um, the correct, correct fixtures, and making sure that they're shining in a way that when you're looking at the building, you're not staring at it, right? That it's, 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 it's angled downward, so that the light is there on this, on the surface, but not shooting out, you know, horizontally. And I think that might be some of the issues, because it's some of the old styles, that it, the, the bug eyes that are out there right now, that I think might be causing some of the problems.
Like, I think it's actually, there's, there's LEDs that are on top. There's the, the ones that you're talking about, but then there's a second set that are on top that, um, maybe those were added recently, but they're, they're very much against what our policy states.
Well, then we'll make sure that we, like I said, it's a fixture issue, then we'll, we'll make sure that that i- is in accordance with, um, providing the correct light levels, but then also, um, making sure i- that it's not shining in that, in that manner.
Okay. I think that, that would be relative to the neighbors and, and the, and the Lion Street. Um, and then the other one was the, um, the play area within the parking lot. Um, we talked last time about prevent, potentially providing a buffer. I do see that there's wheel stops on the adjacent property, and I think there are bollards added around the corners, um, which I think helps with some of the, the cornering vehicles. But I guess the question remains in my mind, we talked about snowplows. We also talked that, you know, that there's vehicles traveling right there, right next to where kids are playing. I guess, maybe speak to the decision to not include curbing around the, um, the play area.
Um, for the most part, it, it deals with the expense, right? Because we're actually, actually trying to dig out the, 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 the driveway as it is. So I've done, we've done, I've done quite a few where, you know, you, it is in this situation, um, and then additional buffering and grass is additional maintenance, right? Um, whereas that could be used for the kids themselves, rather than additional, you know, br- uh, shrubs or trees, um, out there. But, you know, curbing, if, if that, you know, uh, appeases, then that's something that's opening to that. But in terms of just trying to be efficient as possible with, with the layout, um, and, and thinking about the initial cost, but if you had, yeah.
I have a question. So, um, the, the ballers, are they called ballers? The big baller things, where we have them on Sixth Mile, where we put them every, like one every so many feet? So it will go around the entire perimeter, or the front perimeter, or of the playground? Would that be sufficient?
I guess I'll, I'm going to speak on a, the basis of aesthetics. I just, I don't think that would, to me, I, I think there's, there is a part of this project where, um, you know, you're bringing in new use in, and I, I do think there's, beyond the facade, I feel like there's some site improvements. Um, and, and Mr. Bonjero talked about a little bit about the location of the dumpster. To me, it feels like, I, I feel like a little more effort on that side of it. Um, because the site is, has way more parking than you need, I think. I think the recommendation was, um, I, I don't know if it was twelve spaces, and, and by my count, if you include those ones on the adjacent dogleg, which technically are on your property, you have thirty-one spaces.
Okay.
So to me, I, my preference, um, if, if, if you're interested, is that, um, you know, to try to provide that buffer, I think there's opportunity for landscaping. Um, I know that was noted that there wasn't any real, um, landscaping as part of the project. Um, it, it just feels to me that, um, you know, that's, that is where the kids are going to be playing. And I think some buffering, that could even help with some of the sound issue, too, some vegetation. So those are just some, some of my thoughts. Um, and I appreciate your, your feedback on that.
I appreciate your suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Droes. Are you all set with it?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
At this point? Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Kermigan?
Yeah, just, just so I'm clear, when you talked about the bollards all the way around the play area, or just on the corners?
Right now, they're just on the, right now, they're just on the corners. But again, if, if the concern is safety, and, you know, then we could add them. But then, at that point, then, then curbing makes more sense, right? Um, a- as, and, and what I'm showing now, having the bollards on the corners, making sure that, you know, the major corners are not being hit, is it. But if, you know, we were to do a bollard every, every few feet, then yeah, add a six-inch curb at that point, um, would make sense.
I thi- I think the concern that I've got is, is if, if you've got children playing in, in a fenced-in area, the vinyl fenced-in area, what prevents a car from going in there and hitting them and hurting somebody? I, I understand a six-inch curb, but even the, even the smallest of cars can jump a six-inch curb and get in the, in the play area. If someone puts their car in reverse and hits the, means to hit the brake pedal, hits the gas pedal, they back right through that wall and can hurt someone. So I'd, I, I'm into something that, that would secure that area from children being hurt. We just did a job, uh, uh, Seventh Mile and Newburgh, I think. We had them put big rocks there to protect kids, just in the event. But I, I'd like to see something that protects them, and, you know, as Patrick said, Mr. Droes said about some landscape, and I don't think that's necessarily a bad, a bad thing either to add to this plan, but I'd like to see some protection for the kids. And, uh, I gotta say, I'm not crazy about the dumpster being right there on the edge of that fence either. I think that needs to be somewhere else.
So, uh, yeah, the difficulty with the dumpster, um, so the, the current version of the site plan, I was trying to maintain the, the aisle on that back end, um, to continue that, so that cars could still get back and forth. Because, um, my understanding is that it was a shared parking in that back, the back area, right? Um, just how it's laid out right now. Obviously, now, just getting, getting the actual property, um, layout, I'm seeing a very different vision, but trying to be neighborly and making sure that we can kind of maintain on what the perception of everybody's lot was. So in, in doing so, um, putting the, the trash on that corner, um, allowing the dumpster to, the dump truck to come in and out without, you know, much fanfare, going too deep in, um, and then I, adding it some extra production at the corner for the, for the, the play area.
I understand what you're saying. I just, I'm just not crazy about it right next to the play area dumpster. You never know what might happen with that truck coming in there. Kids are out there. I just, it's, it's, it's an uneasy, uneasy feeling with kids anywhere near that garbage truck.
We can bring it on our spot.
Yep.
All right.
Well, moving.
Any other questions or comments for our petitioner? I don't see any others at this moment. Uh, let's see if there's someone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item, and then we'll, uh, give you a chance to come back up afterward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer. Anyone else in our audience wishing to speak for or against? Feel free to come forward, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Dennis Keen. I reside at one-five-zero-nine-three Lion Street. I'm the property directly behind this business, behind the concrete wall that is crumbling apart as we speak. Over the years, I've put mals down and just had nothing but stone crumbling off this wall. So wasted my money. Another thing that I'm getting is I'm very supportive of small businesses.
Sir, can you, can you talk to us?
My bad.
Thank you.
My bad. Um, I'm really supportive of the small business. Um, I think they're, they're detrimental to, um, our societies. They're, they're kind of the, the heartbeat of them. And then you get the bigger ones, which are your corporations. What I am having a hard time with here is the staple of the community that hasn't been discussed here, and that's the residents. The residents of this community are your staple, not your businesses. Because without your residents, your businesses won't have business. The other thing is, is that they were reaching out to contact each other as businesses, but nobody came to myself or my family, other than in the means of a letter by the city, which I find to be kind of shallow. My home, my pursuit of happiness starts there. I have been a volunteer in this city for over fifteen years with children. I have coached baseball from T-ball, currently working with some high school kids. Love it. Can't get enough of it, so much so that I had to go to Southfield and start with some organizations over there. Not only that, I also went to Redford and helped out over in Redford. I love it. I love kids. I like to come home to peace and quiet. As I see right now, that's going to be disrupted. It's going to be disrupted on any given time. I know that they have a schedule, but my schedule is twenty-four-seven at that house. That's our family that lives there. That's our peace time right there. It's concrete there. You guys know how echo just, it just echoes off the concrete. There's nothing to slow it down. Like you said, we need some kind of sound barriers. Upon saying that, I'm an independent contractor, operator's engineer. I have built sound barrier walls alongside the expressways. By all means, I'm not asking for a sound barrier wall of that size or that caliber. But there's going to be needing something done to block out that noise, and to retain our privacy as being sovereign citizens and seeking our pursuit of happiness in our own homes. And I hope that we can come to resolve. I have some ideas myself. Like I said, maybe we could discuss, uh, raising that wall, getting that wall repaired, getting it raised up maybe a few more feet. Um, we talked about the adjacent properties across the street there. Now, although that's an adjacent property that's vacant, that vacant lot's owned by the liquor store there, is it not? So my concern now is, okay, we have the liquor store here. Down the way, we have an assisted living home. I've been living at this house, my wife and I have been here for thirty years. And we've seen so many transformations going on, on this corner, from doctor's offices originally, to a COVID testing site, back to whatever it is now. The COVID testing site was probably the biggest test of my nerves, because every day I'd be in my kitchen window, and I would see somebody relieving themselves in the parking lot. And it didn't matter whether it was a number one or number two. I've called the police several times. I would like the sergeant's name that you spoke with to get any of the reports of the incidents that had taken place over there. We talk about dumpsters. I don't know. I know that you guys are aware that the city of Livonia has had a rat problem. That all started back when ninety-six was ripped up. When that was ripped up, we had, I fought them with you guys, telling you. And now you're talking about setting a dumpster next to a playground. That sounds kind of disgusting to me, because I can just see them rats having a good old time in that playground, too, after rummaging through that dumpster with all their feces and urine. Concerns, yes. Total objections, no. Uh, like I said, there's compromise to be made. Doors open. Uh, I'm willing to hear suggestions, and I've even offered the property up for sale if you guys would consider rezoning it for her. So, um, thanks for hearing me out. Like I said, there were some of my concerns. I'm sure I could come up with a lot more, but I'm just going to touch on that for now.
Oh, we appreciate your comments. Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Hello. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Maggie Heineman. I live at two-eight-three-four-two-five mile. I have lived in Livonia for forty-four years, plus ten years before then, and I've owned a business here for forty-four years.
Excellent.
I think that we desperately need a childcare center here. I'm a seventy-five-year-old, and I watch the parents in my neighborhood drag their kids back and forth from their homes, because they've worked out a system where right now, they can take care of one another's children. But they certainly would like to have something like a daycare center there. Now, I'm not sure, will your daycare center also handle the challenged?
Yes.
Ma'am?
Okay.
Please talk to us.
I'm sorry. But that was important to me also, because I have, I happen to be an ARC advocate, Association of Retired Citizens. And I think it's important that we have one care of, for those children in this community also. My only concern that I have here is that the gentleman mentioned about the liquor store on the corner, and the healthcare center, Maj- Majestic. Unfortunately, there, the one concern I have is for the security for access to those backyard locations of the children. Yes, you could not restrict a daycare center from being near a liquor store, not at that distance. But unfortunately, a lot of the gentlemen from Majestic use that liquor store as a bar. They pick up a couple of handfuls of, of their small bottles, and they drink them as they wheel themselves down Five Mile. Not judging them, they're probably in a lot of pain and a lot of sorrow. But I just want to make sure that the children are protected. Perhaps you could have just key access or access card to the back, and just have only open access to one entrance in the front. That would be my only concern. But I truly believe that we, we do need a, a care facility, particularly if we're going to take care of our challenged children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Oh, wait a minute. One more comment.
Give you one more shot there at the, one more bite at the apple.
The young lady that was complaining next door, I gotta believe that when they had the urgent care center there, that they had in, in and out, um, traffic continually. And here you're going to have in traffic around nine o'clock and out traffic five. It seems like she would have less, less transactions there. Sounds like a caring to me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Uh, if there's no one else wishing to speak on this item, uh, I'm going to give Ms. Farmer a chance to come back up. If there's anything that, uh, you would like to address, we don't want to create, obviously, back and forth debates, but you did hear some concerns, uh, expressed, and some ideas of improvements that could be made. Is there any thoughts that you have as to anything that you heard or any other comments that you would like to make?
Um, the first one that I would like to address, because I, it's just been brought to my attention by the residents about the, um, liquor store and the flow of the traffic. Um, my architect and I were just, I just asked him if he could look into the codes and maybe fence in the entire property and have a rolling gate for the entrances and, you know, for them to go in and go out, so that maybe we can keep our children safe, which is my first priority, keeping my staff and my children safe. Um, had I known that, we would have discussed that in our plans, but I did not know that. Um, the noise, we will go back and figure out something to see what we can do to work with, um, the residents to keep the noise level down. Again, our children really aren't, um, that riled, riled up and screaming. But of course, when they're on the playground, you know, you do get a couple of screams here and there. Um, again, I am in a quiet subdivision, and I love my quiet and quaintness. When I want to, you know, hear all of that, I go to my family's house in the city, but I come home and I relax and rest, that I know that I am safe. And I definitely, um, if you guys can remember, that was the first thing I said, was about the noise and about the residents, taking them into consideration. Um, I'm thankful that they, they, they came to the meeting, and they are open to discuss this and work together. And I would like to do that. I do feel that there is a need for childcare in the city of Livonia. I'm literally around, all of my other centers are literally around the corner. Um, so we flow, I flow through here, and I don't see it. And we have people that live in the apartments, right, I don't know what they're called, I'm sorry, but right across the street from this location, that bring their kids all the way over here. Not even bring them. We actually drive to get, pick the kids up from that location, when now they can walk across the street. So we are open to, open to negotiation, um, suggestions, anything will help. We want to be at value and bring value to the city of Livonia. That is our goal. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Farmer. I appreciate your comments. Uh, and I will now go back to the commission. Is there anybody on the commission wishing to ask any additional questions? No additional questions from anyone? Uh, if not, I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion will be in order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to offer an approving resolution.
Go ahead, Ms. Kermigan.
Though I do want to say, I appreciate how, um, amenable you are to talking to the neighbors and making sure that everyone is really happy and, um, everyone is, um, that you're being a good neighbor to all of your, your new neighbors. So I'd like to offer an approving resolution that this request to operate a daycare nursery at two-eight-two-seven-five Five Mile Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council waiving the minimum size requirement for the outdoor play area and the following conditions. One, that the site plan labeled G zero-zero-one on plans dated December five, twenty-twenty-four, is here, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Two, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Three, all light fixtures shall not exceed twenty feet in height, and shall be shielded to minimize glare trespassing on adjacent properties and roadways. Four, the overall average illumination level for the parking lots shall be one-foot candle as provided under section seven-point-two-two of the zoning ordinance. Five, that the entire outdoor play area shall be surrounded by five-foot-high vinyl privacy fencing. Six, that the parking lot shall be repaired, resealed, and restriped to the satisfaction of the inspection department. Seven, all parking spaces, except the required handicap spaces, shall be double striped at ten feet ten feet wide by twenty feet in length as required. Number eight, that the hours of operation for the childcare facility shall be limited to 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Nine, the outdoor play area shall be surrounded by landscape, by landscaping or curb buffer to the satisfaction of the planning department. Ten, that all disturbed lawn areas, including right-of-ways, shall be sodded in lieu of hydroseeding. Eleven, that the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of building materials that shall be, that shall complement that of the building. The enclosure gates shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass. The trash dumpster area shall be maintained, and when not in use, closed at all times. Number twelve, that the specific plan referenced in the approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. And thirteen, pursuant to Section 13.13 of the Livonia zoning ordinance, as amended, this approval is valid for a period of one year, only from the date of approval by the City Council. And unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
All right.
Can I, can I add a couple of conditions?
Go ahead, Mr. Bonjero.
Support with, petitioner will work with the adjoining neighbors to, for sound mitigation.
On the internal wall between?
Internal and external, as the neighbor behind said.
All right, okay.
And then, location of the dumpster. Any, anybody have ideas on that? Have we?
So number eleven doesn't indicate, just talks about the dumpster, it...
Construction of it, yeah.
Doesn't say anything about location. I suppose it's based on where the site plan indicates it. So if we want to change the location, we need to specify, I would think, at least the general area, correct, Mr. Uhazy?
Yeah.
Okay. Hold on, sir.
Did we like it in the back southwest corner?
That's my backyard.
Ms...
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we got to take into consideration his, for him, too. I don't know. I mean, do you leave it there?
We already hear, we already hear the dumpster being dumped at five o'clock in the morning from the liquor store.
Sir. We, we understand. Let us, we, we need to make our decisions at this point. We understand. Thank you. Ms. Dinaro, as the maker of the motion, do you want to specify anything about dumpster location in this?
I mean, I'm, I'm okay, yes. I mean, I'm okay saying that we, we don't want it there, and, and saying that, I mean, it should, it needs to be on the south, on the south side.
Okay.
The south side.
Sir, sir, this is not the time for you to speak. Thank you. Please. Mr. Bonjero, is that sufficient? Sir, 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 I've asked you.
Did you hear me?
Sir, you're, this is not the time for you to speak. This is our time to make our decision. Sir, if you do, if you keep speaking, you'll be removed from this meeting.
But it's not going to stop me from taking the next step.
Sir, you don't want to do this. I've asked you to stop speaking. I'm now telling you to stop speaking. This is not the time to speak. Mr. Bonjero?
I think it's got to be on the south wall. He says southeast.
And we're okay. We just talked about it. I think southeast would, would be okay to, for the trucks to come in and...
The truck can swing around, Sam, and get in there? It, it can. It would keep it away from his home, and it would put it in, in an area that, that's maneuverable and good enough. Okay.
Okay.
I'm agreement. Yeah, I agree to that.
Okay. I think we've settled that. Is there anything else that you wanted to modify in the approving resolution?
No, the sound was my concern, and the location of the dumpster.
Okay.
Just the, so the southeast corner, close to the road. Is that what you're?
Of the property, correct.
Of the property, okay.
And Ms. Dinaro, you're okay with?
I'm okay with, with those changes. Yeah.
Great, great. Okay. So now we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, if this...
I guess maybe one potential additional suggestion. A resident indicated, and I think it's shown in the photos, that the, the existing wall between the two properties is in state of disrepair. And I think, as a minimum, I think that's, should be taken care of as part of the project.
Okay. So you want that added as a?
Yeah.
As an item?
Top point it, or?
Yeah, looks like it's a precast of some sort.
That'd be repaired.
I guess just one, one question on setbacks. Is there any, I guess, Jacob, is there any particular setback concern about locating along Lion Street? I mean, what is the...
The dumpster?
Yeah. Can be within a setback, or is that going to be pushed a little bit?
I'm not aware of any that would require the dumpster to be so many feet from the property line. It, it does look like, I'm not aware of any.
Okay. I guess if there is any setback, a suggestion would be, again, because the site is overparked, and we're short on landscaping, that that could be green space used to maybe help screen that a little bit from the street. Those would be my only two.
So additional landscaping around that enclosure, and, and then also the repair of the, the rear wall?
Yes.
I think that's excellent. The maker is okay with that?
Yes.
Support is okay with that. Anything else from any commissioners? If not, there's a motion to approve on the floor. If the secretary's ready, please call the roll.
First, first was Dinaro, second, Bonjero?
Correct.
Okay. Mrs. Dinaro?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjero?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Droes?
Yes.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chair Wulshaw?
Votes aye. Motion passes. This will go on to City Council with an approving recommendation. You'll be contacted on when that meeting takes place, and we wish you luck on your project. Thank you for coming to this meeting tonight.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have approval of minutes.
That's the approval of the minutes of the 1,223rd Public Hearing and Regular Meeting, held by the Planning Commission on December 3, 2024.
And let's take a look at that one. This was, I have a couple different minutes here. That was twenty-third. All members were present, with the exception of Mr. Ventura and Mr. Karen Magna. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Ms. Dinaro, supported by?
Support.
Mr. Long. If there's no objection, I think we can show five to approve that with Mr. Karen Magna abstaining?
Yes.
All right. I don't see any objections, so we'll have that marked as approved. That takes us to the end of our meeting. Is there any other business to come before the Planning Commission? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Make a motion to adjourn.
That's by Mr. Bonjero, and supported by?
Karen Magna.
Karen Magna. That's to adjourn. Again, if there's no objection, I think we can safely show six to do that. I see no objections. So with that, we will adjourn the meeting tonight. I do want to thank Livonia Television staff for bringing this meeting to our community. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 7:58 p.m. and wish a good night to Livonia.